States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment first. Do you want to, um... Is there any public comment on agenda items before we get into the public hearing? Yes?
Hi, um... I do have a comment on an agenda item. I also want to just make a point that your 5:30 meeting upstairs in the conference room, thank you for videoing it, because I will be able to watch it later, but I was quite surprised that it's up in the conference room because it was very well attended, and I don't think that that's the best venue for that type of a meeting. Anyway, so as far as agenda items, item number three, the request to deny permits for Project Maple Expansion, expansion of the Alguacan Pipeline. This has nothing to do with politics, but rather practicality. Our grid currently cannot support proposals for future electrical usage. Other options for power must be kept. This is 2025, an era when energy generating plants use cleaner options with different fuels. Our current energy bills have risen dramatically due to green energy taxes and surcharges that all utility companies in New York State have had to deal with, and then get passed on to us, the consumer. Also, when the electricity goes out, what does everybody think will power generators? Right now, anyone who has an automatic generator in town that is close to a natural gas line, those generators will automatically turn on using natural gas. Other people use diesel fuel or they use gasoline. Solar panels on our homes will only hold a charge with the battery panels for a few hours. We need energy from reliable natural sources, plural. No one blinked an eye when a cable was run down the Hudson River this past year from Canada to New York City to help them meet their electrical needs. Yes, through Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson. I respect the diversity of opinions and the beliefs that are proposed. I respect them. However, I would remind this town board that you represent all of us, so perhaps this should not be a cause that this municipality endorses. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes?
Greg Robey, Menlo Springs. Um, I have a comment that I've repeated. It's already been pre-wrept, the agenda went from ninety-four pages to one hundred and nineteen this afternoon. If we are supposed to be able to keep up to speed, that is less than open governance. Two, I don't know what's on the item number twenty, but I have given you all emails of what I am doing with the Orange County Board of Ethics. I request that the town board consider enjoining in that effort, given what's coming out in the news with the IDA authorizing to spend a hundred thousand dollars to override the voice of the people in terms of a person who can veto their decisions if they get out of hand. So perhaps the town, the village board could be an approach. Also, um, this is, uh, this is honor-type governance, honor culture governance, which we walked away from in the War of Independence. It's about everybody having equal rights. And the last pieces I have learned since the last time I gave testimony here, that people are not aware that agenda items may be put on the agenda by any board member. Here in this body, you, as our supervisor, chair the meeting, but to dictate the agenda? That is, the law is silent on that, and two members may call a special meeting, and inferred in that is the right to establish the agenda for that special meeting. So that and the citizen omnibusman position, neither of those are validated in law. The last one is item seven. I'm completely floored with this. There is a legal wall between our board and our attorney and the attorney for the assessor. That maintains the color of her presumption. If she makes this decision and, of course, causes it, and I do think you and I had a conversation about this when you, when it was authorized to spend more money to pay for this, perhaps this matter, but I will say that that same attorney has been involved as well as ours in what has denied me my foil right without any review by the board, and none of the board even being notified. Should I have a bogus sexual harassment warning by the, by the representing attorney of Drake Motes? Has not seen any need to either communicate with me or to get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So moving on to the public hearing, I know everyone's here for the draft 2025 Annual Report on Stormwater Management Program. This is a continuation of last month's meeting. I don't believe anyone has come into the clerk's office or my office to review, I think it's like a thousand-page document, on the, the new stormwater regulations where, you know, a permitted MS4 community. So unless anybody has any questions, we're going to close this tonight. You know, of course, if you, you know, after we close this and you want to come and you have questions and we need to reach out to the engineer, we're happy, the town engineer, we're happy to, but unless there's any questions, I would ask the board to close the public hearing.
Is there anybody here that wants to?
Yeah, is there anybody here that wants to comment on the draft 2025 Annual Report on Stormwater Management Program? No? Okay. Then can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes. Okay. So next we have the public hearing on the, the tax cap override for FY 2026. So basically, you know, our, uh, our tax cap limit for this year is ten million two hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and we're going to be over. We went, you know, we were going through expenses upstairs, if you caught that part of the, of the meeting, but, you know, basically, you know, there's a 1.1 million increase in expenditures, which we had gone through, which is basically debt service for the capital improvement projects that are currently going on, the, you know, resolving of the PBA and CSEA contracts, along with the, you know, EMS services, you know, went up, that contract went up, health, medical, pension, all the normal things, those went up. That equals about 1.1 million dollars. We're also using 1 million less in fund balance this year. We've been over-relying on that lately, and, you know, we have to stop doing that, and so we're taking a million dollars off the table. Last year, we appropriated 2.5, and we are, it's just, we're not able to do that any longer and be, you know, financially responsible as a town. So we're taking a million off the table, and so that, you know, will lead to, you know, the increase there. And so, you know, even if we didn't do that, we would still be over the cap due to the contractual obligations. So before I, you know, ask the board, you know, does the board have any comment on this before I open it up to the public?
I mean, I think you said it last year, that the tax cap is a, something that was derived in Albany in 2012 under the Cuomo administration, where Albany decided that it wanted to put a limit, or at least impose this superficial limit, on how towns and local municipalities were going to tax individuals and spend money. To me, especially in the years that have gone by, there is a lot of times where I feel like sitting in this seat, Albany is trying to dictate to Cornwall how we're supposed to look, how much money we're supposed to have, how much money we're allowed to spend, what we're allowed to spend it on, whether they're going to give us grants for one thing or another, whether we're allowed to tax people for one thing or another. Cornwall is a bedroom community. We rely very heavily on the assessed value taxes on homes in order to support our revenue stream. There have been proposals in the past for increased commercialization of our community, for accessory dwelling units that are detached from homes that would increase property values, for things that would increase the population or decrease our quality of life. And resoundingly, this community has said, no, we like how we look, we like the preserved spaces that we have, we like the growth rate that we have, we enjoy the small-town Main Street commercialization, we're not interested in looking at New Windsor. I love, I love my friends in New Windsor, we just don't want to look like that community. We have our own feel. And in order to accomplish our goals, knowing that Albany is not coming to save us, we have to keep our values in line with the way we spend our money. And sometimes that means that we have to go over the tax cap. Now, I made this speech last year, I don't know if anyone listened to it, but we didn't go over the tax cap in the end, so why did I make the speech anyway? But this year, we're going to go over, because everyone else is too. The town of Newburgh is going over, the town of New Windsor, the town of Chester has gone over, flown by, and flown the coop over. And town of Chester, remember, is very much like us. It's quickly changing, though, as it's, as the composition of the people that live in Chester starts to change in very quickly. And so, I, I will always vote to override the tax cap. I'm voting to override the tax cap when this closes because I find it to be a fiction and something that is not commensurate with the, with the nature of our town and the quality of life that we want.
Sure, yeah.
I think the, the tax cap supposedly was made on good intentions, but I don't think it's based on reality, and there are times where we do need to override it just because reality is not what's going on, you know, here, it's going on in Albany. And, and I agree that our communities, like other suburban communities, they don't have a lot of commercial properties, we do bear the brunt of this because we're, we don't have those other revenues to subsidize. So I will be voting to override this tax cap, but I also, once we work on this budget, I do expect to, for us to be responsible and cut down on some of the expenses. Thank you.
I would have to agree with both the councilwoman, Ellen Mayers, and Scott. You know, this town, the man, tax cap unfortunately is going to have to go above because Albany is putting some constraints and making our town try to look like other towns that we don't want, a commercialization in our town. But what's good about our town, we have some small economic growth going on in our town right now, and as those projects proceed to move forward, and once they get completed and stuff, you know, we're looking at some really great madeables, you know, down the line, down the line, 2026, 2027 especially, and onward. You know, the short-term rental tax coming in, once that, you know, gets redeveloped and, and starts increasing some more madeables for us, it's going to bring back, you know, some better fund bounds, you know, so that we can stabilize our tax base. But unfortunately, that's not happening. Obviously, that, okay, totally agree with councilwoman, Ellen Mayers, that it's not helping us out, you know, 2% is nothing. You know, we did the same thing with the commissioners, when obviously commissioners saw it's way mills, you know, we had to pass it, and, you know, we're going to do our best to try to keep it as low as possible during the next couple of weeks of our tax, you know, meetings, and, you know, when it's hammering it down to, because, you know, we all pay taxes in our town, and, you know, and that's how, we all get the feeling, our burden, and we understand the burden and stuff, so this coming out definitely get it passed and vote for passing the tax cap.
I am actually also agree with all three council members, and I have no further comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, before I open it up, I mean, look, I would just say that we, we had the opportunity to take the easy way out, and the public said we value our scenic beauty and quality of life, and they came out overwhelmingly against the way that would have, you know, helped on the, you know, on the tax base. And I think that really just shows to our values. I mean, like reaffirmed what Cornwall's all about, and this happened, what was it, two years ago now that this happened? And so, you know, our plans, if you look at what we're proposing to do here in Cornwall, it is, we have this outdoor rec visitor, you know, based economy that I think is low impact, and we're seeking to take advantage of that. And I think if you look at the stuff that we're proposing to do here, I don't believe it's going to ruin our quality of life. I think it's going to just continue to take advantage of what's already happening, and I think if we look out over the next few years, there will be additional revenues coming in from that. We'll see a growth, you know, a small growth from the smart economic development. And there's, you know, other positives on the horizon too, that we're looking at in the years ahead. But I think we, but in absence of, you know, going down the direction that other communities are going in, we're gonna, you know, I mean, we only have one way, you know, we either have to increase revenues, or we got to grow the tax base, or we're going to have to increase the levy when expenses come up. And so, we're choosing to kind of do a, like a, like take a balanced approach, and I think that's what we're, what we're trying to do, because, like, we all love living here, and I don't think we want to ruin that. And so, I'll, I'll open it up to comments, to the public. Yes?
Greg Robey, Menlo Springs. Um, I shared with you the 1980s study, Josh, that the legislature, state legislature did, switching over to income tax, I gave to the mayor as well. I would encourage the board to, if you have not seen it, to ask for a copy. I will give you a copy if you need it. There is no reason that we should not be switching off the property tax. And the other thing that I will mention is the default governance in this county is the board of supervisors. Josh, if all the supervisors are drowning in the same puddle, maybe we should bail them. You know, do this, both as, through the county, as through the, through our municipalities, force our state to follow up on the fact that it really now probably is awash, if not more economical, to do it with an income tax. This would eliminate the needs for the taxatory kinds of expense, or sitirory, whatever the right pronunciation that is. It would mean that you don't have to hunt for additional tax revenues in terms of, and collecting, it would be involved with the hotel tax, and the room tax, and stuff like that. We're doing what we can to work around the elephant in the room. We don't have to have a property tax anymore. Land does not generate the income. The income generates the income. Work generates the income. We're taxing that. We could do that regionally and locally if we want to take a long process. It won't happen overnight. But 1980, that's a few decades ago, and they walked away from it. But they still send, they ask for, we have to beg for grants, which is our tax monies. We have to, um, hope that there are grants through our legislators given to us. I got introduced to this process from Skirmore when I was our senator, and, and it's, it's the way things run in New York. It's an honor culture system. We can do it differently if we want to step forward and do it, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
Just a question, how much is in the fund balance currently?
We'd have to go fund by fund. So, I mean, you can certainly, you know, you can request that. We'll be going over that on Thursday night. It's fund by fund, so you'd have to go, every fund, there's the, there's the main funds, and there's all of the, the regular funds, and so we're going to be going over that at the next budget workshop.
Thursday, 5:30.
A Thursday at 5:30.
So when you say we're not tapping into the fund balance again, as was done in the past, did I, I, um, am I correct? Is that what you said? Then, my, my question, that's why I asked a question, how much is in there, but...
So there, there's the four main funds, and each fund has its own amount of assigned and unassigned fund balance. And once you get to a certain point, you need to stop because you don't want to fully deplete your, your, you know, assigned and unassigned fund balance. And so, we, we've been, you know, last year, we stayed under the tax cap. We probably shouldn't have, and actually, we did warn that this would happen this year when we were closing the budget, that if we did that and we used more fund balance last year, we'd have to start taking away this year. That, I mean, if you go back and look at that, that was like, go take a look at the, like, in the local, take a look at the, my budget letter, you know, I did say that. And so, you know, here we are, I mean, and we have to start getting back to where the tax levy is going to match the operating costs unless non, you know, tax, you know, property tax revenues start increasing. But, you know, we're not in that environment, and so we don't want to use up all of our fund balance, and so we've, we've started pulling back. But we'll, we'll have the, when the board goes through this on Thursday, we're doing revenue, fund balance, and taxes on Thursday at 5:30. So I would, I would come and, you know, be present for that, and we'll go through it.
So, did you say we were, we were looking, considering using a million dollars of less of the fund balances? Is that what you said?
Yeah, last year we applied 2.5 million.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I was correct in what you said.
Yeah, this year we're taking away, we're only applying about 1.5.
Okay, so...
We're taking a million off the table. We probably shouldn't have, look, I'm just, like, so...
You shouldn't have done 2.5 last year.
Yes, last year, because the, the board had wanted to, you know, stay under the tax cap, we applied more fund balance. And so, we're now in a position, and we said this last year, look, if we do this this year, we're going to have to pull back this year. And we had done that partially because, look, we've been in this high inflation environment for a while, and, look, different boards have done different things with fund balance over the past, you know, you know, four to five years, while we've had double-digit inflation, trying to keep taxes low, but when you don't have revenues growing to replenish the fund balance, then you get to a point where you can't responsibly apply fund balance year after year after year. And that's where we're at. We just can't do it unless, you know, unless sales tax starts, you know, exploding, or we start having the same mortgage recording tax that we had, that, you know, helped us build up the fund balance to begin with. We don't have that. We're not in that environment, and we can't do that anymore. Yes?
So, two things. I think, first of all, as someone, you know, we also have the budget locally, and I just, in favor of the tax cap. We adopted the budget differently in the school district, but it should be said that before tax cap was passed, 8%, 9%, 10% levy increases were very common for school districts, not just in Cornwall, but throughout the state. And after that, they've been relatively constrained. In addition, where the budget is put in front of the community, 98% of the proposed budgets by school districts of the state have passed since the tax cap has been adopted, and previously it was something, I think, like 70 or 80%. So what it does is give you a good rule of thumb, and if you have to go over it and override, then, you know, necessity dictates, and we have to go get a supermajority. So, as you said, you can't do this every year, but I think the point is the tax cap, since 2012, 2014 in budgets for school districts, has been actually a very positive thing in terms of rating in cost, making more judicious decisions, and also more public support, not just here, but everywhere. But I think there's also, like, they call it the possible trinity of local government finance. There are three desirable things, but you can only have two of them. You can have low taxes, you can have quality public services, or you can have low intense development. And historically, Cornwall has chose poor public services and low development, and for the benefit of having low taxes. And my hope is that if you're raising the taxes, at least that what's going to come with that is we're going to get the commensurate quality of public services that we would hope for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. Um, so then I would make a motion to close the public hearing on the, um, on local law to override the tax cap for FY 2026.
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wojtkowski?
Yes, and, um, okay, so when we get to the special meeting, we will be, you know, moving to, you know, to override the tax cap. And just for those who weren't present at the meeting before, we did identify, we think somewhere between, what, 200 and maybe 250,000 dollars worth of...
So far.
You know, so far worth of cuts that we did identify, that we can, you know, take out of there, that we don't think will really hurt, you know, services. So, we did identify that, and, you know, we'll be back talking about that on Thursday. The darkroom special use permit renewal. So the goal here is to, as you know, the darkrooms, the darkroom disco tech has a special use permit to allow it to have events and, you know, the studio space. And every year, you have to come back to renew your special use permit, and only the town board can grant this special use permit for this. I know on the, now, I don't know if this is something the board would like to consider, or if the applicant is interested. Maybe at some point, we could look at pushing this back from every year to every couple of years, instead of having, you know, the applicant come in here. I don't believe much has changed in his operation of the number of events. Do you, you have anything you'd like to, to add?
No, nothing's changed. Just one little long. But, yeah, if I could, if we can do this every, say, three years, it would just save time on everybody. Just, I don't, I don't know what it would take to get to that step.
I agree. I would support that.
What would you say about that?
Yeah, a section of the zoning code that pertains to special permits is 158-40, in this case, Section B, and it says that the town board, when granting a special permit and issuing a special permit, it can set a periodic timeline as to when it should be renewed. It doesn't have to be, you know, renewed at all. It could be a special permit that is just issued, and it's issued particular to a, a particular applicant. But in this case, you know, the special permit was set with an initial renewal period of one year. But there's nothing in the code that specifies that it has to be one year. So if it's the will of the board to change that, you most certainly may.
My understanding is the point of this was just to set the date for the, the public hearing. Perhaps we could actually discuss that during the public hearing. Am I correct?
Of course, the, the purpose of this is to schedule the public hearing.
It's just to set the schedule of the public hearing.
Correct, but the, you know, the suggestion has been made to consider changing the, the timeframe for the renewal, so that it's not an annual renewal.
Do we have any other examples of other businesses that have had a special use permit where we've had a different timeline, or is this a unique experience for now?
Yeah, most special permits that have been issued by the town during my tenure for the last 20, 22 years have not had a renewal period attached to them.
Oh, that's perfect. Then I would like to have that discussion, that we not have a renewal period at all, because I don't know why we would treat one business different than all of the others. That, that to me is alarming, actually.
Well, I think it's just, you know, we can talk about the public hearing. I just think it was circumstances, because there were, was changing, it was change of language in the zoning, so that was how we came to an agreement for this, because there were parking issues. I mean, we could, we discussed this during the public hearing, but there were...
I'm aware of the history, and I'm aware of all of the discussions before I was on the board and since I've been on the board. But, you know, I think I'm pretty consistent with my positions on equal treatment of applicants in all areas. And although this particular business may have posed certain unique challenges in its initiation, I don't know that those unique challenges came to fruition, and I don't believe that we ought to treat special use permit applicants different than one another unless there is some particularized public safety or public need for that. I think that might be where I would like to continue the discussion.
I also think that Mr. Farah has proven, his business has proven, that it's a beautiful part of the town, it's a safe place, and I don't see any reason why we should even have any terms for renewal, so...
Do we have to, when we're, you know, passing the resolution to call a public hearing on this, do we need to put anything in there about removing the... you know?
You do not.
Okay, so we could just have that discussion and then if we decide, I guess, because, because again, I think we'd have to, the whole idea is that we're just, that he got approved based on meeting certain criteria. And then we could then change that.
Correct.
When we're, yeah, in our approval resolution.
Correct. And the circumstances that may be changed now is that, and you may wanna hear from the building inspector as to whether or not there's been any recent complaints. But if there's not been any recent complaints or any complaints at all, you know, then you, you may wanna ask yourself whether or not you wanna continue to see this project on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Fair enough.
How many events have you had over the last year? How many?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Yeah. Not many.
Yeah, that's what I was going with it. Thanks.
Okay, uh.
To schedule the date?
Oh, yes. Well, I'll, we'll do that in the special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so Mothers Out Front request to deny permits for Project Maple expansion of the Algonquin pipeline. So, looks like we have someone here from Mothers Out Front. Do you wish to, to make comments on this?
Yes, please. Hi, Natalie Rand from Mothers Out Front, as have a colleague, Lofteriser here too. Thank you so much for adding us to the agenda this evening. Um, you, you may have seen like a proposed resolution that I sent a few weeks ago. So I appreciate you taking the time to consider it. Just to share a few of, of, look, the position for Mothers Out Front. This is a, a New York State campaign, or a Moes Out Front New York State campaign. So we have many teams throughout, uh, the state. And in general, I'm, I'm here to urge the board to adopt a resolution urging Governor Hokel to deny permits for the Algonquin pipeline expansion as well as the new frac, uh, gas pipelines of Nessie and Constitution. Um, I, I believe in that email I sent you a map, but I, I can send you again. This is kind of the, from very far away. This is the map of, of where the pipelines, excuse me, pipelines are. But in general, this is to, to join a, a long list, well, a growing list of towns and counties in New York State who have already, uh, requested that Governor Hokel deny these permits. Uh, Project Maple is an effort by Enbridge, which is a Canadian energy conglomerate, to expand its existing pipeline, uh, which runs from New Jersey through Ramapo and Stony Point, uh, then under Hudson River through Westchester and into New England. Uh, we know that this project runs counter to New York's climate goals and it puts our health and our kids' health at risk. Why is this? Uh, I've kind of came up with four points. One, greenhouse gases. We know that greenhouse gas emissions exacerbate the climate crisis and the extreme weather events that we're all experiencing in the region. Uh, we know that methane, which is a major component of natural gas, is fueling the climate crisis, which is eighty times worse than carbon dioxide. Number two, we know that pipelines and gas appliances leak. So leaks from gas pipelines emit harmful pollutants like benzene that are linked to asthma, chronic, uh, obstructive pulmonary disease and cancer. Three, uh, cost. Long-term commitment to fossil fuels does generate higher-end volatile costs that disproportionately affect low-income customers. It, it can also impact our property values, our natural open spaces, which in Cornwall, we, we really do relish, and also our local tourism. So as industries continue to move toward clean energy alternatives, uh, we believe that this pipeline will become obsolete and will leave taxpayers on the hook to pay for unnecessary and underutilized assets. And then fourth, uh, commitment. Project Maple will lock us into decades of fossil fuel dependence just when we know we need to be transitioning to clean energy. So it's risky, it's unnecessary, and completely out of step with New York's climate goals. I, I'm happy to, to send any other resolution, you know, proposals from other towns. If you'd like to see alternative language, we have, you know, over fifty local and state elected officials across New York have voiced their opposition to the project. Um, and, and if you have any questions, please do reach out. But in general, I believe that Cornwall, with its rich history of environmental advocacy, uh, really does have an opportunity to take a stand here and say no to Project Maple and the other pipelines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from Mothers Out Front that wishes to speak? Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Lofteriser. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, there are many potential dangers with these pipelines. The places that they are running underneath, um, have, one is a nuclear power plant, um, they go across fault lines. There are all of these, um, potential risks involved that would completely and catastrophically affect our quality of life here. And we are a river town and we know that one of the things that is quickest to show the signs of climate change is water sources. And we're gonna see that on the Hudson as we're Cornwall, you know, along the Hudson. And so I think especially as we're talking about our major source of revenue as a town and, and what we're most proud of is our natural resources. I think making any decision to not stand, uh, up against this kind of, um, you know, potentially hazardous, not even potentially, it could potentially be terribly hazardous. It's definitely not gonna help our, uh, environment, you know, in, in some ranging from medium to large, um, ways. And I think, you know, us not taking a stand against it. A lot of these pipelines, something that Natalie didn't get a chance to mention, is a lot of these pipelines were denied, um, uh, in the past couple of years because they did not, they were, you know, the government took a look at them and the EPA and decided that they did not meet the environmental safety regulations that we would like them to, to be able to do this. Now, what has changed since then? Several things. You know, the values that we currently have as a nation, as happens, have changed. But my question to us as a town is, have our values changed? Have what we value, um, as a town, has any of that changed? And if the answer is no, then perhaps we should take a stand for the things that we value. Um, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm not a member from Mothers Up Front, but I'd like to just echo some of the sentiments and just give some concrete examples. Um, while it wasn't a pipeline, what happened in the Village of Rockers Falls last year where a pipeline under an apartment building exploded and left, I think, something between fifteen and twenty families homeless because literally this was a bomb going out under their house, including, uh, some of my own students. So I know, you know, the risk over time that these things that are buried underground will almost never be maintained to the degree that they should be and poses a safety issue. And I think the other thing about this is that some of these pipelines kind of exploit the fact that, you know, natural gas and some other things were relatively cheap as a source of energy, and that's unlikely to continue in the future. So the capacity you build now maybe is going to, uh, allow these things to go forward, thinking that the prices will stay the same. But in twenty, thirty, thirty, forty years, prices will probably come up to the other sources of energy and therefore there won't even be an economic benefit to some of these pipelines. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, I think it might be helpful to, um, you said there was other, like a list of other elected officials that had signed on to this? Would, would you be able to, I mean, certainly we're not, we're not acting on this tonight. You know, we're just discussing in a, in a work session. I think it might be, would you be able to provide us with just some of the other, you know?
I, I can do that research.
Yeah.
Does this run on, um, through, through the Ramapo watershed? Am I correct on that?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Which then flows into other watersheds. That's why it's orange down. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? I think, I mean, obviously, I mean, I don't know that we're prepared to make a decision tonight on this. I think that, you know, um, anything else you can provide us and we'll, you know, we'll get back on this. Thank you for bringing this tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so next I have All Aboard Hudson Valley Westshore Passenger Line. So, um, I think some of you have heard of, um, All Aboard Hudson Valley. Maybe, maybe not. Have you seen, um, do you know, uh, Dan here? He's, uh, you know, Cornwall resident. And so actually, this, this is really interesting. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through this, but, um, for those of you who are longtime Cornwall residents, I mean, this certainly goes back to Pa- you know, before I was, you know, um, alive. But we used to have the Westshore train line down, um, you know, it's now a C, a CSX, you know, uh, freight rail line, right? And so back in the day, we had that. And that was, in fact, I'm sure some of you have seen the tickets from like Newburgh or Cornwall down to different points south of here. And so this idea is that, um, and I know, you know, if you look, like go back and look at the history, um, over the years, over the decades, you can find newspaper articles at different points in time, different, you know, county execs, different, you know, groups of leaders in the region looked at bringing this back. Um, it never happened. Um, but here we are again talking about having, you know, basically having a transit desert here on this side of the Hudson River. And, you know, the MTA, the governor, you know, the legislature looking at ways to, um, increase. Now, look, this would not be a short, you know, a short-term project. I mean, this is a, a long-term, expensive project. But the governor right now, she is looking to do studies on how to enhance, um, transit service on this side of the Hudson, whether it's via bus, train, other, you know, methods. If they're gonna be doing studies anyway and spending money, why are we not having them look at, you know, a feasibility study of reopening the Westshore train line? You know, if they're already doing it, why not? Um, and I think, I think that's, you know, but I think in order to make sure that they're gonna do that, up and down the Hudson, and I think it would actually be fitting for Cornwall to, I think the goal here, at least for me and, you know, for someone like Dan, would be to, let's tell the governor that they should look at this as an option. Let's just have them do the feasibility study. Um, if it's outrageously expensive, never gonna happen. But if they're already looking at this, they should, you know, they should do some, you know, level of research. And so I think what the goal here would be, um, to, you know, maybe either Cornwall passes a resolution, writes a letter, sends it to the governor and says, hey, you know, you're doing this study, include the, you know, include this, look at this. That's all we're asking. If it comes back and it's gonna be like a hundred billion dollars, you know, or whatever, um, well, okay, fine, then it's not feasible. But if it is, you know, like a possibility to do this and we could, you know, and it's reasonable, then we should, you know, look at it.
Are other communities looking at it? Or like Nyack, West Nyack, Dan U F, Lawville, Orangeburg, Stony Point, Newburgh? Is anyone else going in in the same way?
So, he's in Cornwall and he's starting the, you know, the process here. And I know you've, you know, if you wanna talk a little bit about where you're at with this.
Yeah, sure. So, um, I, you know, I interface with a bunch of other transit advocates in Rockland County and in Newburgh. Um, a lot of my colleagues in Newburgh are involved with the, uh, the movement for the, uh, Newburgh Beacon Ferry, which has recently been canceled as well. So, yeah, um, you know, events like the implementation of congestion pricing, the cancellation of the Newburgh Ferry, just shed more light on this public transportation issue. So, um, yeah, I mean, historically, there's been a lot of leaders. Um, I know Senator Scoofus and Dan Rockland have been very vocal about the, uh, inefficiencies the MTA provides our side of the river and the need for better public transportation options. So, you know, this problem is only gonna get more out in front of us and more in light. And it's a good chance, now that New York State is doing this West of Hudson Transit Study that, um, they announced this year, like Josh mentioned, it's a perfect time to, you know, ask for a feasibility study. They have, you know, I wrote Governor Hokel's office earlier in July and Janet Ho from the New York State Department of Transportation responded back to me, highlighting the story and mentioned, uh, they are looking at rail, uh, rail options as well as, uh, bus options as well. But, um, you know, it, this is the, to me, the most holistic, uh, solution to our transportation options. You know, we have buses here. We've, um, we, you know, this is a, a situation that is not only a solution for Cornwall, Newburgh, Orange County, it's multiple counties, it's multiple cities and towns that would benefit from this.
So.
Yeah, sure.
So, I mean, I, I like the idea, but in reality, we have to go back to reality a little bit. So on the east side, we have a transit line, right? It's all transit, right? The Beacon Line. And then on, on the west side, we have the Erie Line, which is, you know, coming out of, you know, Campbell Hall, South and Els, right down to Seacart, is right? So that's the two lines for, for passengers. We have to remember, we have to keep moving commerce all the time. And the Commerce Rail is that CSX trail. So, and you think about putting like a double rail, double tracks side by side 'cause commerce is gonna have to run through that line. And, and I know since you live in Cornwall, correct? And you know how often that train gets used to move commerce from north to south on a regular basis? It's like huge. And so, like, because it's the only line that's left and stuff. So, the, I don't think anybody in their mind would wanna take that away.
No, absolutely not.
Unless you think about putting like a second track next to that. Well, I've seen that in the past. I've seen another areas where the one track wants commerce, other track wants passenger.
Correct, yeah. So, so the CSX line is formerly called, is officially called the CSX River Subdivision. It is one of the most important freight lines in the northeast, historic market to New York City. Um, there are options, there are, um, instances in New York and New Jersey where CSX and Norfolk Southern both run major freight rail lines along with the New Jersey Transit Service on the Barrowd and Davenport line. So it is the, and there is a precedent for it. Um, even in recent options, there's a, a lot of neighboring states that are going through studies or implementing new rail service as well. Uh, Massachusetts, New Jersey, Connecticut have all implemented, uh, new service in the last several years or is studying it. Um, a good example is the, um, east-to-west line in Massachusetts that will go from Boston to Albany. That is on CSX infrastructure. So, um, you know, typically, class one freight railroads are, have been very unfriendly to passenger rail on their lines. That's changed a little bit going on in the future. And yes, the line would need to be double-tracked. The concept of having it run from, if you say, regular commuter service to Newburgh to Nyack, you know, you'd be having commuter service on only a small portion of the freight line and not tying up all of their, uh, infrastructure. So, I mean, there is ways to do it, but, you know, that's the point of a feasibility study is figuring out the best way to go about that with the cost of things.
And how does the resolution assist you or the effort to do the feasibility study? I think I'm hearing language from you that they're doing it, but you're asking for a resolution. So how does the resolution assist you in the execution of that?
Sure, great question. Now, so this is an opportunity for, and I really don't think, you know, this idea has been kicked around for the last several decades. It really hasn't gone anywhere. Um, you know, nineteen nineties, New Jersey Transit from Nobok and to Nyack was one of the most recent, um, uh, you know, uh, attempts at studying this. And what this is, is I, I haven't, in my, in my studies of this, have not come across a, a instance where municipalities along the line have raised their hand and said, hey, you know, this is something that we would wanna have. This is the solution that we want. We want a feasibility study for this. So while New York State's West of Hudson Transit Study has loosely mentioned rail and really kind of leaned more heavy towards buses, the resolution here is, is to say specifically to study the, the Westshore rail idea.
If they're not leaning for buses, I hope they have a plan for the Lincoln Tunnel.
Sure.
Cause it's a disaster right down.
Or general traffic congestion in general, right?
So I think, I think the idea would be, and I mean, look, you know, whether Cornwall's first or whether there's others that are, would pass a resolution is that if you get Newburgh and you get Cornwall and you get Cornwall and Hudson and you get, you know, Rockland County, some of these others, and you send that, you know, to the governor and to the legislators, that will be more likely that we can actually get this study, you know, for the specific Westshore line in the, that's, I, I think that's all we're asking.
So forgive my ignorance, where does the CSX track end? In, in New York City or Hoboken?
Sure, so, uh, no, it's basically, the line is, um, sandwiched between, um, two major yard facilities. One up in Selkirk, New York, just north of Catskill, and then the other end is Oak Island Yard in New Jersey and Newark. So it's, it's between those two sections.
So what, the idea would be somehow to get us to Secaucus?
You, there's, well, there's several different, you can either go, uh, make a connection through to Secaucus into Penn Station, which the eventual plan for that is something called the Bergen Loop, which would tie the Secaucus line into New York Penn. Or, um, you know, remembering when the new Mario Cuomo Bridge was built, it was built originally designed to have rail go over it and connect to Grand Central. So, I mean, if something like that was more feasible, and there's been ambitious rail infrastructure projects that have been implemented all over the country now. So it's not that big of a reach. And you look at Bright Line in Florida for examples of that. But, you know, if something like, obviously, that's, that would probably be the heaviest price tag, right? Cause there's a new right-of-way involved with that. So, I mean, again, feasibility study would answer all those questions.
Thank you.
Do you know if Salisbury Mills Station, any of those have been, uh, earmarked for this study? I mean, you already have this and I know that people use it. They can, Cornwall residents go there.
Sure, yeah. Uh, the Port Jervis line, um.
Port Jervis, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no harm. The Port Jervis line, uh, has had plans for decades to add passing sightings in to increase capacity. Um, that all, those plans also included a midpoint yard to be built at Campbell Hall. That all, those plans also included a midpoint yard to be built at Campbell Hall to accommodate the extra trains. I know Senator Scoofus was, implemented, I believe, a hundred million dollars for those passing sightings a couple of years ago. Haven't seen anything really materialize on that yet. The Port Jervis Line to me, you know, provides an important service, you know, when I was getting my degree in, in New York City, I took that, that line every single day back and forth. And, um, so it, it provides an important service for Orange County. But, you know, the importance of the west shore line is that it feeds and services so many areas in Orange, Ulster and Rockland County that have no service, that our leaders have been clamoring for better options for over decades. So, you know, keep in mind that in Westchester has three passenger rail lines that serve it, Hudson, Harlem and New Haven all serve it. There's air instances in Bergen County, New Jersey have multiple lines that serve the same.
Yeah, now I would just say, I mean, look, you know, Orange County, it's growing. We're getting, we have a billion dollar budget now. We're getting close to a half a million people. I think it would be, like, our county is growing and it's going to continue growing. I mean, some people don't like that, some people like that, but, you know, it's going to, people are, are moving here from downstate up here. And we're gonna continue growing and we need more transit options. And I think a lot of people work down, you know, in Rockland, Westchester and New York City. And, and so this just only supports them getting to work and increase mobility in, you know, the county and in the downstate area. So, I mean, certainly, you know, maybe we can come back to this, but I'm hoping we can, you know, get a resolution passed at some point. I mean, certainly, you know, talk to Dan offline if you have further questions about this.
I'm just curious, the village, it's, it's in the village. Like, have you discussed it with the village board?
I mean, right there, not yet. I don't know. Maybe Josh has interfaced with the mayor there or?
I have, I have shared it, but, I mean, we're starting, we're starting it here first. I mean, you know, I don't control what the.
No, I just think it made sense because it goes.
Yeah, the station would be in there too.
It's the village. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. If you have any questions, I mean, like, please reach out to Dan. Okay, next we have short-term rentals and hotel tax. So, if you do this quick here. Okay, so we had kinda mentioned this in various, you know, during the budget workshop about the, uh, the need to really, um, you know, streamline and enhance how we are, you know, registering, regulating and collecting tax from our, you know, STRs in the town of Cornwall. And so currently, I wanna say we have less than a dozen registered. We know there's somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred in the town of Cornwall. And so the building department, they have asked that currently, um, we have a hundred dollars. It's a permit and registration fee is a hundred dollars and then the renewal fee is twenty-five dollars. They're, uh, they're asking us to raise this to two hundred and fifty dollars and bring the permit fee up to a hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not saying we should do exactly this, you know, this configuration, but certainly, um, this is gonna become increasingly a lot of work to manage this as we start, as the county puts its database in place. You know, we're gonna all of a sudden be confronted with, oh gee, there's like seventy-five of these on the county's list and, oh, only six are registered. Well, guess who's gonna, we're gonna have a huge enforcement, um, situation here. We're gonna have to register all these people. We're gonna have to, you know, wait through all these applications. We're gonna have to go out, depending on what they're doing, we're gonna have to go out and inspect some of these depending on, you know, the level of, you know, you know, like what they're doing on the property. Some of these even require, I believe, site plan approval if they're having events, I believe is written into the law. So we are gonna, you know, this is gonna be an increased workload. So certainly we're gonna have to, you know, to be able to, to pay for that in some way.
Where, Josh, what would this money would be diverted to? I mean, the fees.
It would go, it would go to the building department to support the efforts that are gonna be involved in, we have a short-term rental regulations. And we expect, you know, the number that we currently have to grow rapidly once the county puts this list up. And once, you know, or if we go and, you know, aid that list with this other thing we're gonna talk about, we're gonna have a lot of work that we have to do. And then we're gonna also have to figure out, are we doing yearly registrations? Are we doing every couple of years? Like, what, you know, what's the?
Is this gonna be kinda like an announcement? I mean, right now you're telling us?
What I'm saying is, uh, they're asking us to raise the fees.
I know.
Because right now it is, you know, this.
But not all the homes, to my understanding, the rentals come and report that they're renting, so.
Yes, but we can't fully identify them right now because we don't have the data. What I'm saying is that in the near future, the next, like, three to six months, we're gonna have that data and we're gonna be sending letters out to everyone that's not registered with the applications and forms. You know, for one, you're not registered and two, if you're doing this, there's now five percent, you know, SDR tax. And you have to register to pay that. So, you know, there's gonna be some work involved in this. So anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that we, we decide tonight, but this is, they've asked us to look at this and to up the fees and to consider how we're gonna go about doing this.
Yeah, I don't mind up, upping the fees at all. I just wanna see what the county can provide to us in terms of resources to identify the, the, the properties.
Yeah, because my understanding is the county was actually going to supply this information to the local municipalities.
Yes.
So when we were at the Association of Towns meeting, they did talk about it.
So, yes, so they.
And Steve Newhouse has said it as well in, in the recent past.
Yeah, so they're going to be setting up the registry. They're not gonna collect, I mean, look, obviously I know, obviously. I've asked, I've said, hey, will you collect the tax for us? Since you're already collecting your own SDR tax? Will you not only, but, look, I, you know, I understand. I mean, they're leading it up to us. At least we're gonna get the list. And then we can do it on our own. We can figure out who's, which office is best to do it here in the town of Cornwall, whether it's my office, whether that's the clerk, whether that's the receiver. We'll have to figure that out as this grows. But, sorry, but, but, um, you know, and so the other thing on here as well, um, I, I was just highlighting this because I had asked, the town of Chester contracted with Decker Technologies. It's a GovTech company. And they're, it's a forty-five hundred dollars for the year. And it's basically, they use, um, it's AI and it's other, they pull on a lot of sources from all the platforms and they're able to come up with, you know, who in your town, like, like with a list of properties. You know, just using this, Chester's been able to find that there's either like fifty or seventy-five properties with this, you know, software that they've used. And so then this software also helps you do the, the outreach, you know, and then also collect the payment. So it's kind of like a, but I think what we could do is I'm, you know, I'm gonna sort of see how this works in Chester. Let's see how it goes. Let's see how the county rolls this out, you know. And then, but, you know, obviously, like, like the key thing here is that we need to have better access to information so we can, you know, fully regulate and, you know, get, you know, most entitled to us at this point, since we do have the short-term rental tax. So, and we're counting on that, you know, in the future to be a strong source of revenue. So I think this is just a, you know, a wait and see on the county. We'll stay close on what Chester's doing just to see how that works out for them. But certainly on the permit thing, I do think we should, uh, if the building department's asking for us to raise the fee, we should certainly consider that, um, at some point. So, okay, this is, uh, holiday decorations. Okay. So, um, let me just get into this. So you know, last year we did snowflakes.
Oh, we don't have anything?
Well, we're, Tommy's here.
Oh, we don't have any paperwork or?
No, no. So basically, um, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars sitting in our Main Street Capital Fund to be used from, after we submitted all the reimbursement of those expenses, right? For the Main Street grant, we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars back. That is sitting in the fund to be used for Main Street expenses.
I have just a quick question.
Yeah.
Cause I know you're laying the ground, cause this is, this, you just sparked a thought from the last meeting. So because this, we use money from our general fund to actually.
No, not the general fund.
The, well, where did that money come from?
The grant's paid off.
Right, but wouldn't that money go back to the general fund? I'm just asking a budget question.
Well, it's first going into the, we're going to keep this in. We have ongoing needs for, we have the Triangle Park. We have other.
Okay, no, I just thought that we, we expended that money already and I, now we're gonna use the money.
It's paid off, yeah.
Right, but we're, I'm, I'm just wrapping my head around, like, budget. This is over a hundred thousand dollars. Shouldn't that money be used for some, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not against this, but I'm just thinking like how we're doing this with the money. I, I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
So when you pay grants off or, you know, borrowings off and then you get the grant after the fact, so the money's coming back. We have ongoing needs on Main Street. So, for instance, there are additional garbage cans and, you know, park infrastructure and things in our Main Street parks. I mean, Tommy, you had asked today, you know, we had a discussion today about there are some additional garbage cans that we need on Main Street that we should maybe use some of this, this money for. We have the Triangle Park next to the new bridge that we intend.
Virginia's just asking a very simple math question, Josh.
A math question?
The question is, since we, we received a grant to, to perform certain work to beautify Main Street.
Yeah, it has to go back to the capital fund first. And then the town board would then have to decide, are we transferring the money from that?
So it's going back to the capital fund?
From that fund into the Gen A fund. So are we gonna keep it on Main Street where we have expenses that we have, we have future parts, we have garbage cans, we have different things that we would have to purchase anyway. So we can either keep it in the Main Street, in that fund, that's gotta go back there first, right? If the town board, yes, the town board wishes, you know, we could take that back and put it into the Gen A fund.
But isn't it, didn't it come out of the Gen A fund to pay the, the debt on that before we got the grant money back? And that's sort of the, that balance as well?
For this grant. So we got a grant and we set up the main, uh, the Main Street Capital Fund.
Okay.
Right? We paid that off because it took many, many years to spend the initial amount of money. But because of the way we did it, that, that grant money has to go back into the fund that we originally set up for that grant money. So it's gonna go back there first. If the board wishes to move it out of that fund, it can, but it has to vote to move the money out of the Main Street Capital Fund into the Gen A fund.
Okay.
So that's, like, we would have to decide that, but we, but we would also have to take into account, well, we have the Triangle Park. We have additional garbage cans.
All the interests and, all the interests in play.
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to, I was asking a technical question.
Well, I'm not, but I'm giving you the, you know, the.
But that's the answer. The answer is the money goes back in the capital fund and then we get to decide as a board where it goes next.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So that could be back to the Gen A fund, that could be straight to, for you to the park, that could be a lot of them, different things.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, thank you.
That's how it flows. If Pam was here, she would explain that.
Well, I was, and now I was.
No, I think that, that was very helpful.
Yes.
That worked.
Yeah. So, okay, so if the board wishes, now again, it's gotta go there first.
You said that.
Yes, it has to go there first. So once it goes there, if the board wishes, there are, you know, and we spoke about this last year, we did the first tranche of snowflakes that are going from where they're going. What we're proposing is to put snowflakes in front of Cornwall Plaza from CVS down to the traffic circle to tie in our whole sort of like commercial district there. That is basically the proposal is to.
How many snowflakes is that?
It's like, it's about like ten to twelve snowflakes.
And are they, they're about five hundred apiece?
But you also have to put the electrical service.
Yeah, and they're like two thousand dollars.
More than that?
Yeah, it's about fifteen hundred dollars a pole.
We spent the last of Senator Scoofus's grant, if you recall, during the electric polls. I'm not, I'm just, there's, there's a lot of money here.
No, sure. This is, this is going towards long-term beautifying of our Main Street.
No, I, I understand the goal. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
So you're saying, as, Tom, did you have a number or anything? Was it like fifteen hundred or was it two thousand? That was seventeen hundred per, per pole, wasn't it last time?
We got some weird quotes last time.
Weird ones?
Ray was the cheapest.
Okay.
He's the cheapest again. I think he came in at like fifteen fifty.
Okay, per pole?
Albright was like sixteen or eighteen hundred.
Okay, times twelve or times ten? Do you know how many poles?
Per pole?
I know, but how many poles?
I mean, it, it hasn't been a final decision.
So that's just something that, keeping the numbers.
I thought it was a thousand per pole.
It was a year, a year plus ago when we did it.
Things go up.
Everything's up.
Everything goes up.
People's salaries and money that they have to pay their taxes though. And we need to be mindful of that.
So when do we get the exact numbers of, of poles, I mean, snowflakes and the costs and all that? Next session, next week or so?
I'm just, I'm giving you the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so, so Tommy's been on, you know, getting the pricing on all of this, but we.
Just in the polls?
Have a pretty good ballpark.
Thank you.
Figure for what it is. And this will, we'll be back on to talk further back.
Forgive me, could you also remind me, where do we actually keep these after purchase?
They're stored above the, um, they're stored behind the senior bus up on the ledge. Where the major seniors do. There's nothing can get up there. It's restricted access, but we're running out of.
Restricted access?
There's so much room up there, so we might have to do some shifting.
Well, since it's gonna be additional, um, snowflakes, I just figured I'd ask, so. The storage is very important too. You have to, you have to keep them. You have to keep them. They're fragile for me, so, anyway, thanks.
Okay, um, so, let's see, uh, the tax for G R E settlement, um, you have the details here. This is, as you know, this is, you know, Ira working with the assessor on this, um, to, you know, to get to this, um, you know, settlement. Then we have the, uh, Seeker Resolution for the Jackson Avenue called the Replacement Project. As you know, we got a Virgin New York grant that is going to pay for that, but we do need to, um, pass the Seeker Resolution. Adding to that is the, um, because it is a Virgin New York grant and it is DOT money, there are additional, um, they're asking us to do some, uh, you know, more enhanced geotechnical, uh, studies. And so that's what this is for, where they basically like drill down and I guess they see where like bedrock is and they, you know. So, you know, and they actually, they are asking that we do this, uh, Jamie from M N, she was asking that we do this tonight. We did put this out to, um, yeah, and the cheapest, you can see it's a tectonic for twenty-two thousand dollars. And let me just, you know, look, I, I was like, when I first got into this, I was like, wait, why are, why are these geotechnical surveys so damn expensive? And I, I, I know that. I do, I do know that, but, um, you know, it's not like a, a simple survey with Toppo. It involves like, you know, equipment and machinery. Okay, um, let me get to this next one here. Number ten, okay, ten. New York Swims. So this is going to be on the agenda for, uh, next week. We are gonna have to adopt the Seeker Resolution and pass a resolution. You know, the board at the, at a previous meeting, we had agreed to submit this for the New York Grant, which is due on, I suppose, October thirtieth or thirty-first. We've been working on this diligently behind the scenes. And so next week there will be a, um, you know, M H E is doing the E A F long form and there'll be a Seeker Resolution. And then there will also be a resolution saying that the town board's in support of this, of this project. You know, basically the, as you know, we've been working with the pool engineer, M H E, to come up with the design to get a cost scope for this. We're working on letters of support for other agencies, you know, that would possibly, you know, be involved in using the pool, you know, the book of daycares, the, you know, schools, et cetera, um, other groups that would use it and benefit from the pool. And so, you know, we have, what, two weeks left to get this together? But if we get it, and, you know, look, again, we're just happy that we're eligible this year. Last time, we weren't, but if we get it, I mean, we're asking for, obviously we'll have like a, like a certain like match requirement, but we're, you know, we're asking for, you know, the max that we can get, um, towards the pool. Mugger Cottage Fire Monitoring System, um, this is something that we're gonna have to, uh, to update here. Do you have anything to add on that, Tommy?
I mean, the boxes were put in before Tim worked here, so.
But they worked. I mean, when I would say, the system worked, I would have tested several times.
No, no, they, they, all of a sudden they just stopped.
Nothing lasts forever.
Nothing lasts forever.
So it's a thousand dollars for two panels and forty-five dollar for monitor.
But now we're, we have monitoring goes, it's every six months we get billed biannually, so the monitoring is just. Right now, we're, we have monitoring goes, it's every six months we get built biannually, so the monitoring is just gonna be built differently.
So is this the charge of?
It's really just the two panels, it's it's like the two thousand dollar upgrade.
So is this forty-five dollar charges it, that's it, or is it forty-five dollars a month?
Forty-five dollars a month.
Okay, I thought it didn't, okay, gotcha.
Right now, that's what I'm saying, we pay biannually, we pay that way.
Okay.
I forget the number, but it's like three something biannually.
Gotcha, okay.
A little bit news on that too.
So, so that's that, um, this next thing we're gonna have to talk about a little further, do a little more exploration on this, but, um. Our cell tower here at Town Hall, we're now at the point where, um, we have to, uh. You know, the the site is up for, of the leases, uh, you know, beyond expiration.
I'm sorry, what number are you, I'm not the, the, seen that.
Uh, number, number twelve, American Tower lease extension.
Twelve, twelve, twelve.
So that, like, you know, that like the cell tower here, right, the one that all of the crows and sometimes hawks and turkey vultures like to build nests on? Um, so that, you know, the the lease is at expiration or or beyond expiration, and so, we have two options. Um, there's the continue, the continuation of the, you know, long-term lease in different manners, um. We also probably need to, you know, consider, and you know, Tim and I were talking about this, how much longer are we gonna be using cell towers for things in the decades ahead? And if you look at the, this is like, are we gonna lock ourselves into s- you know, six, five-year, so in thirty years, are we gonna be using cell towers? Or is it all gonna be like near-earth, like Elon Musk near-earth satellites providing everything, or are we, right, so I'm saying, like, there's. There's certain things to consider, like, are we gonna lock ourselves in long-term? Does proposal two, which is, are we at the point where we believe there's more value to be gained by going with a lump sum payment? And then throwing it into i-class and getting four percent interest, which is something like twenty-eight thousand dollars a year in interest you're getting on that, that money. So we have different things we have to consider here, um, and then also the other, what is it, Verizon, you know, the other, you know. Uh, what Verizon Spectrum, the others that are on the tower, what happens to those if we don't own the, the tower? So that, you know, that like something we need to kinda, to, you know, work through here, you know?
So the tower, um, like.
We own the tower.
We own the tower.
And we lease it to American Tower, and then other providers put all their stuff on our tower, and we get payments.
Do you know how old is the tower? How many decades that has been sent?
I I I don't know, it's old, I mean.
It's been a little while.
Yeah. They did a lot of tower replacement when I was here in two thousand fourteen, and they added some, put their whole sections up.
Huh? The actual tower, we just own the land, that's it, so, the tower doesn't belong to.
No, 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 we own the land.
Yeah, to start the land, yes. Yes, we own the land, they put the tower on the land, yes.
Yeah, I was talking about the tower. We don't, oh, so who does it?
Uh, American Tower Corporation, American Tower Corporation, yes, yeah.
Well, in the past, I remember two, um, town employees, they had concern about how, um, it could be unhealthy to be near these type private towers, to work around it, so. Health concern, so.
I mean, look, we're not talking about getting rid of the tower, we're just, we're talking about, we're talking about whether or not we're gonna extend this lease for like six, five-year terms. And get, you know, this minimum lease payment over time, and also factoring in, do we think that, you know, what's the likelihood of this being the way? In ten to fifteen years, or are we look, you know, gonna do a, a one-time lump sum, you know, we're realizing that. That money can sit in in i-class and earn like four, you know, three to four percent, and earn anywhere between twenty-eight and thirty-four thousand dollars a year. I mean, obviously, even if it's, you know, Pam and I did the calculation, even if it goes down to like two percent, which is likely to get there in a year or so, two or two years, we're still earning. Yeah, yeah, so anyway, um, you know, but we have to like talk about this further, so I've got some, some more digging to do, but by the end of the year, we definitely wanna come to a determination.
Dominic, are there any other municipalities that you've come across that they do have such gigantic tower in there?
Yeah, the county, the county has fifteen towers, they functioned all of the first responder.
New Windsor.
Oh, New Windsor. Okay. Oh, yeah, of course.
Everything, and they had, we did tower easement, um, leases and.
I see.
Takings and, it's, it's an interesting business.
Understood, thank you.
Uh, next we have the Windsor EMS, the Cornwall ambulance station, the painting of Cornwall Station, so this, my understanding is basically. The Windsor EMS, Town of Windsor, are going to pay to paint the Cornwall ambulance station, this is the pricing. But we need to in some way, either what, have an informal agreement with them, or, like, what what do we need to do, Dominic, do you think here? So, you know, we have this.
Well, it's not the town, it's just, it's just the EMS.
It's it's Windsor EMS, yeah, yeah, so they're, so the nonprofit entity, the Windsor EMS is gonna, they wanna pay to make improvements to the building, paint it, basically.
They wanna paint the town building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're gonna pay for it.
Well, I I spoke with, um, Michael, um, and we kind of walked through the building, and, um. I mean, just painting my home around this time last year, um, we were both talking about maybe, is this the right time to be doing it? And we we also went through the building, and he was showing me some things, uh, the flooring and other things, and I I did. Because we we were discussing the same things from Mungar Cottage, I asked him like, why don't you just come up with a list of things that you want? Because for number one, painting the building, the gutters, and and Tommy and I discussed it, the gut, the gutters are all cracked. And no matter with the paint on it, it's just going to create the same problem, because of the mold is actually on the side of the building, so, um. I I'm not against this, but I also, Michael and I were just talking about maybe prioritizing what you wanted, and I didn't think the painting was the right idea at this time.
I mean, look, I'm gonna defer to Tommy on this.
His exterior?
His exterior, they also wanna try to paint interior as volunteer, so that was the other thing that came up, I mean, the good ideas, they wanna do the work, but, um.
I think spring would be a better time, and.
What what's your suggestion?
I I don't even really know, I'd have a lot more to think about if I could send something to me and say, hey, this is my dog.
I think we have, you know. I asked him to come up with a a priority list, and and maybe could we do that?
The gutters, I've I've had priced out for years, they're over fifty thousand dollars to replace the gutters on the building, that's why I would just go back and seal the.
Just seals?
The seams every ten feet, because where is that money coming from, it's a lot of money for gutters.
Yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of improvements in the building, there's a lot of things that I think have looked better, you know, you know, some things, but, but there's some things that, you know.
I'm just saying, Michael wants, is, okay, from the town board, to get the approval that they could hire this person to paint the building.
Okay, I guess I'm a center stewardess, I thought you wanted the town to pay for this.
No, I said, they're willing to pay for, we're not doing, they want.
Zero money comes from the town.
Zero money comes from us.
All right, well, I inform, that's all, I'm not gonna say anything else.
It's a good idea, put in the pile, I guess he does, he wants to.
No, I just, like, we went through, and we had a nice conversation, and he has a, he has very good ideas, and, you know, obviously, they wanna support it, but.
Zero money from us, I mean, I, look, obviously, I mean, if we were gonna, if we knew that in the immediate future, we were gonna do the gutters, I don't know that we're gonna do the gutters on the ambulance building in the next, like, two years, right?
Okay, well, you 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 closed the loop, because I was wondering why there was only one quote taken.
Yeah, and this is something that, he just wants our our blessing to paint the building, because it's a town building, he wants the fourth.
It's gonna be the same color, I know, we we talked about it.
I think the drawback of from waiting until next year, when you're using, is that things, things become more expensive, that's what Mike Hanger told me, he said, if you wanna wait.
He said it was, he would. Right.
So.
Yeah.
Good.
He said, I guess I misunderstood that he, but it might have been from the inside that they were gonna buy the the painting.
As long as they got fifty degrees, they can be.
Okay, fifty.
Next we.
My my.
It's gonna take that two days.
Next we have increased impounded dog and kennel fees, so, um, the clerk is asking that, I mean, we haven't updated these in a long time, um. And we now have fifteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, you know, new expenses that we're gonna have, so certainly, it would be good to try to recoup some of this if we can, um. I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm I'm sort of like, is it worth, you know, and, you know, Jen, as I was looking over this, I was like, do we raise the impound fee, make it higher? Do we, you know, the, you know, like, the boarding costs, I mean, what's the max that we can stretch this to, I mean, we are going from ten to fifty, so. But fifty seems like, like the lowest that we should keep it, I think.
I agree. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I know, right.
We can do whatever, you know, your board feels is appropriate, I did go back ten years and kind of tallied all of our fees for boarding fines, transport impound, and unlicensed dog. And in ten years, it was ten thousand dollars, ten years, and we're gonna be paying some L S B C A, you know.
Wow.
So.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I think fifty dollars.
I mean, I think a boarding cost were ten dollars.
It's very, um, reasonable.
Yeah, it was ten dollars now, it's.
You can't find anywhere.
No, I think the increase is in, in line with the cost increase.
Yes.
So I guess really the question is, is like, is, now the impound fee is like, what, you come in and it's sort of like, well, you lost your dog, if you want it back, you're paying a hundred dollars, plus the cost of. So is that, is a hundred dollars, is like two fifty too much, is a hundred, like, what's the right, uh? Like, certainly, I mean, if someone dumps, like, it's just dumping dogs and we never find them, but if this is like Miss McGillicuddy, right, that lost their, I don't know, I I I use the Miss McGillicuddy.
I use Miss McGillicuddy, I was like, oh.
If, uh.
I mean, most people are gonna get their dog back within a day, they don't usually, we, I've only, I've been here years, normally one time, if somebody left their dog there for like three days, I think, maybe four.
I think overall, to me, it's very, um, this is very good pricing, because, uh, think about, I have two cats and I used to have a dog. For boarding, this is five years ago, but seventy dollars per night, this is five years ago, you don't, you can't find fifty dollars boarding anywhere. So, and the cat sitter or do- dog sitters, dogs, yeah.
Go to, go to that way, I wanted a dog camp.
And this is not a five-star hotel or anything, this is just regular bed, bedmarion.
The hunting dog camp.
The hunting dog camp is way more expensive, I can't.
No, it's not a hunting camp, it's it's a dog camp for people who have dogs, wanna go around and kiss four weeks, go out to this farm and bought load, it's about two-hundred acre farm. And it's meant for dog boarding, and then charge a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Correct. Yes, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
No, it's a big old farm, it's big.
Fifty dollars is very, very.
I think I'm in the wrong profession.
You have no.
My guy, I found, my guy who does the training, I put Duchess County, but he 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 won't take any dog, he has to like, look at the dog, buy him with the dog. Yes, it's a hunting dog, yes, I've got a trainer, and thirty-five dollars a dog.
Jen, I think these prices are in line with, what what you would expect if you were going, if your dog was going to be picked up by the police because you lost it, and then.
Right.
Um, impounded at the A S B C A, so.
I think it's, it's a good change, a good move, yeah.
Good adjustment.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think we're making any money here, I think we're just addressing costs.
We're just trying to recoup some of the money for some of the costs.
And hopefully, you're trying to decrease the number of incidents, so.
I'd just like to see our police officers get off and back on to the road quickly, and I think that's, solves this problem too.
We need the chief, like, driving and dogs and, you know.
We had three dogs, what, in three, few days, in a week, I don't even remember.
I think the day after you signed, we had, we had, we had a dog.
The day after we had one. We had a dog, that that next night, at four twenty, somebody came in with a dog, yeah.
Yeah, but didn't you have to drive it to the vet to get shots?
Yeah, 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 or was that the other, I don't even, it could have been the other one. We had like three dogs within a few days, so, yeah.
Okay.
That may have been one of the best things we did this year.
I agree.
Okay, sorry, um.
Fifteen.
Uh, Taylor Road Culvert replacement, so, look, it's, it's done, right, um, and this, this is gonna be the, this is the payout.
Wow. Oh, good.
Yep, so, yep, this is, this is the, uh, payout for Taylor Road, uh, Culvert, um, three forty-eight, two seventeen. They did a good job with it, um, this next, this next one is Sewer District Number One, right, this is Phase Two. This is for Blue Heron Construction, payout number seven, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. This is the D E C mandated Phase Two project. Um, and then we've got the Hasbrook Drainage Project, payout number seven, um, this is five eighty-six, seven eighty-seven. And I guess while we're here, let me just give a brief, a brief update, so, we are, um.
Triple brief.
No, this will be very brief, if you want to time it, um, this is, this will be, so basically, we've now done a few, um. We will have finished by the time we're ready to close down the project, which is gonna be somewhere between the next, like, two weeks, ten days, two weeks. We're gonna be closing down the project until April, um, the Hasbrook Stretch should be completely finished, um, and restored with pavement. Um, that is the goal, and the sidewalk's done too, um, as long as everything goes according to plan. Um, we've obviously, you know, done work through the backyards as well, through the backyards and up through the woods, right? So basically, we're very close to having, we'll have the Hasbrook Stretch done in almost all of the, the backyard, which is the second path. Leaving for the spring, the, you know, Path Three, which, part of the reason why we're doing this pause, is because we're trying to figure out. A way to, you know, possibly not have to go under Main Street, if there's a way to avoid going under Main Street, because one of the things we, look. As I've said, as we've started this, there's just so much damn infrastructure, like, underground, that markouts, I mean, look, just like, we tried our best on the markouts. But when we started digging up, we're like, well, this wasn't where it was supposed to be, and this was here, and we had all, we had redesigns we had to do, and all these test pits. And so, you know, going under Main Street, under the current path is, could potentially add a lot of money to the cost. And so if we can find a way to avoid that, um, and we think we may have found a path, it may actually save money on the overall price of the job. And so we're taking a pause to go back and take a look at that, and it may end up being better. And so, you know, we were gonna, you know, pause anyway as the weather got colder, but we're gonna take this time to, you know, have the engineers look. You know, to take a look at this, and then get back to work in April, I mean, could it happen sooner, it could totally happen sooner if we come up with, you know, the. And basically, the idea's gonna be to, and this reminds me, I I have to get back to a resident on Curtis, who had asked me, um. When we're gonna finish the Curtis Stretch, and I'm, so, I originally thought that we were going to.
Is that shopping boots, cause I spoke to him already.
Okay, good, um, and so, well, it's possible it's someone else too, cause I I have a couple of Curtis, um, and so basically.
Okay. Right, yeah.
What we thought we might have been doing, if we were gonna continue working, was gonna be to do the rest of Robert, Curtis, down Union, and do the crossing. So what we'll have to do in April is we'll have to come back, we'll have to do the rest of Robert, Curtis, Union. And either we're going through the current path, or we're coming down Clinton, and we're gonna, you know, maybe go in between like the, the hotel property and the, you know, the current, uh. You know, it was like an open drainage ditch currently, so, yeah, so we might be able to go through there, so the engineers are looking at that. So we're gonna take this time because we don't wanna rush a decision, and then have it end up costing a lot more money when we could just take our time and, you know, do it right? And so, we found a good space to pause, and so, you know, but that, that's kind of where we're at, as far as the project. Um, and I think, I think we would all, I mean, I think we've got to the point now, we're having these weekly meetings, and, you know, I mean, I think everybody, I think it's working at these weekly meetings, and we're. We're getting our way, it's been a very complicated project, I don't think anyone realized fully until we started getting into this, um.
Okay.
But anyway.
Thank you for the update.
Yep, okay, Riverlight Park Playground, so, we've started, and somewhere in what, the next, I don't think we have, I know, the, um. The next, let's just hope like ten days to fourteen days, we'll have a finished product, um.
We had an interesting phone call tonight with Cameron, so.
Okay.
Follow-up later, but, they're moving, I won't say it too long, but they're moving.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, basically, and as you know, we, in order to save money on the project, you know, Highway has been doing, we did the graving.
A lot of in-house.
You know, we did, yeah, we did a lot of in-house to save money, to not have the contractor do it.
Oh, it's going.
Yeah. The E V charging stations, okay, so, um, let me just give you an update on this, so, basically, it took. You know the whole story about how, right, the manufacturer left the market, there was a new, uh, Volte or Volte, they came on board. They had to make some type of a connection to, there's this overall network that had to be able to be tied in to E V Gateway. That is currently like the backend of our charger, that had to be done in Italy, for whatever reason, I I don't know, it had to be done in Italy, um, but that was done a couple of weeks ago. And so now we're at the point where. And so now we're at the point where that network's connected, we have to get our chargers now connected to that network. So we've been working on that, and we're gonna have to have a call with like New Windsor IT and with, um, Real Term Energy to make the connection, but all the, all the complicated stuff that, that happened, that happened, so now we just have to get that to work. Um, so that's for our Level Two chargers, right, that were, those are, you know, fully paid off now, we got the incentive from Central Hudson, that's all done, so, you know. But this other option, and so I started exploring this because I was starting to get really annoyed at the fact that our chargers were off, and this was like taking forever, um. And so we have another option here, it won't cost us anything, um, the villages, I believe, is using Integra, uh, EV, right? Um, and so I've spoken to them, and they will, basically, um, let me take a look at this, they will install Level Three, the fast chargers, here, um. Basically, that project costs two hundred and fifty-one thousand, they get a hundred and sixty-eight thousand incentives, they eat, or rather, they make up the, the difference. Doesn't cost us anything, but then they've gotta generate, uh, we don't.
You don't collect.
Make money until they recoup their eighty-three thousand dollars. So, essentially what, I think if we would do this, I'm still pursuing this, let's get the Level Twos back up because we're gonna generate, you know, revenue that way, but, you know, certainly having Level Threes and that can charge a car in twenty to thirty minutes would be a great amenity to the tent, you know, to town residents, it's not gonna cost us anything. Um, so that, I mean, that's certainly an option too, and so I asked them for a proposal.
Do we know how long it's gonna take to get rid of that EV thousand, uh, thousand dollars to start?
I mean, that depends on, you know, the pricing, but they're gonna price them at, and how many people go there, I mean, if that's.
Virginia, wasn't the price was like one seventy-nine, or it was less?
Well, it was less than that.
It was less than that?
Yeah. My, yeah, this is, yeah. Now, my question is, so are we still keeping the, the charging stations that are there?
Yes, we are.
Oh, my, cause that was on my.
We are, no, 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 we are, no, I mean, but, but here's the thing, like, we, I mean, again, through no fault of our own, I mean, we didn't know NLX was going to leave the North American market, we, we had no idea.
Okay, so we're gonna resolve the other issue?
I'm still working through that, yeah, I'm still, I'm still working through that, um, it's, it's been a long slog, I mean, I, like, it really has, and it, it's, um.
Because the other thing is, am I correct to say that you go, you wanna change the location of?
They would, they would add these, we would.
Where the farmer's market is, where the band concerts are?
That's where they asked to put them, I mean, I'm not saying we have to put them there, but it has to be close. But I ha- uh, they have to be close enough to be, um, you know, to where we're gonna have the, the power source.
Power source.
So it's gotta be where there's a power source.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I had also asked them to take a look over at like Munger Cottage as well to see if there was a suitable, but we don't have the, I mean, I can see in the future if we end up doing the Munger Cottage expansion, putting Level Threes over there, like, for the future, but, you know, for now, they felt that this was the best location given the availability of power, would be to have it somewhere in this, like, vicinity. So, I mean, I was just trying to give us an option.
Okay, now I'm just asking.
Yeah. Yeah, of course, of course.
Would we have to, um, put any money upfront with this?
We don't have to do anything.
Nothing.
Okay.
This is, this is, they're doing this, and this is a revenue share, after those costs are.
Yeah, we're not collecting anything either, so.
Well, not.
Not until we pay that EV thousand, three thousand dollars.
So, okay, so that's.
Are we providing the power?
No, they would be doing that too.
By paying the utility bills?
They pay their.
They do everything.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm just saying, they, they.
I know that's a question.
They would, I mean, we're basically, like, this is like almost similar to what I would call like the cell tower situation, where we're just providing the land, and they're doing the install and operating everything and cutting us into a share of the revenue, is, is what this is. I do not have any, um, items received after the final agenda.
That's good.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I mean, look, you know, and I'll, I'll just say this, I mean, look, you know, the additional pages that get added, oftentimes what happens to this is that we get, we'll have meetings the day of, and we're waiting on stuff from the engineering firm for stuff that has to be approved and paid, and it comes in the day of, and no matter how hard I try to get it in before, like, it's just when it comes, and it's every municipality in Orange County, and I'm sure it's even the county too.
I've never had a problem.
Yes.
No.
Reading what you've provided in the last few hours, that's fun.
Yeah, and I'll also say too, the law that's in place says that to the, to, we are supposed to provide a certain amount to the practicable extent possible, is what the law says.
Right.
Yeah. Um, well, you know, so the state legislature would have to change the law, um, they're the ones that put that in place to begin with, um, so, okay, so public comments.
On special meeting items?
Yes.
Oh, no, wouldn't it be?
Oh, no, sorry, this is general public comments, yeah.
This is the end of.
General public comments.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I just want to, I'm not sure exactly what the heck you put on this, but I guess this is to deal with the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And my concern is because several people now have come to me, that members of the town government, as well as the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, have talked about the use of twenty-two eighty State Route, uh, State Route thirty-two. And particularly, for currently, it is zoned as residential, and several people have said, including members of the town government and the Comprehensive Plan Committee, that it will become a gas station, which is clearly consistent with the current.
You're talking about nine W and thirty-two?
Uh, nine W, I'm sorry, I just spoke, thank you, thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
Um, the address is still twenty-two eighty, nine W.
Okay.
Um, but the point about it is clearly consistent with the current zoning on it. And, uh, I'm not an idiot, I understand that, you know, people own property and they have a right to develop their property, and I have not said things when they came across onto my property line and cut down a tree on my side of the property line, or they put the silt fence in after they did the site work, which clearly is just cosmetic, it didn't really follow, like, variety of different things. But my concern is that when they cut down about two acres of trees, and we supposedly have this wanted tree protection law, under the idea that it's a residential, uh, zone residential, so they have the right to do that, and then they changed the zoning to be commercial, to build a gas station there, or they would not have been able to cl- uh, cut the trees down if it had been built commercial. My concern is that this has been said by the property owner going back to last year, and property owners are allowed to have dreams and have plans, but it would seem inappropriate that, you know, members who put a process that's not complete yet are basically already in a sense advocating for it, or telling people in the community that that's what's gonna happen to this when it's inconsistent with the zoning. And then at the folk festival, when the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee is asked about it, and says, what are those, uh, poles there for? And he says, well, those are for political signs, which we all know now what's up there now. It would seem that this is just inconsistent and not really proprietary, and would ask that if there's a process, the process be completed? If that is approved, when you approve the new planning, new zoning, it goes to the process, then please go ahead with whatever is consistent. But before that, I think it's inappropriate, I would ask that, you know, Town Board, I'm a public official as well, in some sense, I help try to hold myself to that standard, perhaps imperfectly, but I think I would, I know many of you, I would expect the same, thank you.
Sure, and so just what I'll say as far as the, they did receive a clearing agreement from the, uh, Building Department, they were required to do a survey, did not cross the threshold that you were talking about. And, I mean, really, you should direct those questions to the Building Inspector, who handled that process for the property, because that is what.
Can I, can I just ask a quick, may I ask a clarifying question, um, are you asking that the political signs be removed while there is this process in place?
No, but, but I think the point is that you should not, public officials, like yourselves, should not be telling what's gonna be happening when it's still being consistent with the current zoning.
Cause it has been brought down.
Just, just so the record's clear, I didn't tell anyone to do anything, and my, I'm not on those political signs, I think it's important for me to say that.
I, well, I'm not, I'm trying to be as general as possible, this is not about individual people, this is about the process, I think for me at least, that, for example, we have this tree law supposedly protects, let's say, the character of our town, people earlier in this meeting talked about that, and that if the trees are too accurate, the trees are cut down, you know, on the idea that this is a residential lot, and then shortly after the zoning is changed, that allows, they basically would not have been able to do that, that's my concern.
So.
And my point is that there's a process and pro- projects that are not consistent with the current zoning, should not be advocated or mentioned or discussed to members of the community before that is completed. It's not a building so, issue, I'm not raising the issue, I never did, this has been going on for a year, clearly I know how to do that. My point about it is, I'm not doing this as a NIMBIE saying, my neighbor is doing something, it's annoying, et cetera, I'm asking that our, you know, our public officials allow and be disinterested in a process we end, that has impacts on, we can talk about the merits of whatever the changing of zoning is at the current proper time, but this is what the, my current issue is that, like, there's been some discussions on and how it's been defended and discussed, and representations made by people to my neighbors about this lot of land, and it's clearly inconsistent, and that's all I'm asking for, is being consistent with the existing law, that we all have a right to expect if it was an adjacent lot to any of your properties, I'm sure you would have the similar concerns, if someone built a gas station on residential lot that was adjacent to your property. And therefore, I think this being disinterested and silent on it would be more appropriate, and really the, the political cynicism is really not a legal issue, but it's an issue in terms of just how the appearance is.
Thank, thank you for clarifying my question, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think that's, that, Dominic.
So, ma- may I just, one more question of clarification, so basically, I wanna assure you that the zoning is not changing on that property because we, the Town Board, nothing has been presented to us by the Comprehensive Plan Committee, so if there are members of that committee, um, that are representing something, you know, I think we should be speaking to them because this is something that is being discussed, it's not, it's not law that's being enacted, we're not changing it because it has to come to the Town Board first.
And I understand that, so raising the concern is that, you know, before you have made a decision, by people involved in the process.
Yes, so I wanna be assured of that, yeah. That's not.
Educating the finality of the process when clearly that hasn't been done.
Okay.
And therefore, if there is a public hearing or comment that these decisions are not made before that public hearing and comment is made.
Yeah, I mean, I g- I guess I, I guess I would ask that, um, unless there's something in writing or, or a witness to what you're saying, that, that, um, this sounds like hearsay allegations of committee members.
Well, most things are hearsay allegations, people say lots of things, really what, I think the.
So, so, I'm, I'm gonna let Dominic sort of talk about.
Yeah, uh, so, right now, the Comprehensive Plan Committee has been meeting for the last, uh, uh, half of a year, and is working on a draft of the Comprehensive Plan, uh, to my knowledge, the Comprehensive Plan drafts that I have seen have not mentioned any specific recommendations for this particular program. The Comprehensive Plan Committee is holding a public forum next Wednesday, uh, the twenty-second, at six o'clock at Munger Cottage. I, they will give an update as to where they are in the process at that time, and also ask for additional public input, this will be the third opportunity for the public to, uh, provide input and guidance to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which they very much wanna receive. And so I think, um, taking aside like whatever comment that, you know, or conversations you had with a particular member, uh, that it would be good for the Comprehensive Plan Committee to hear your comments, uh, at this public forum, which is designed specifically for that. Um, but also, as Councilwoman Scott mentioned, you know, the, the, this process is multi-stepped, and there will be a final draft of the Comprehensive Plan that'll be prepared by the committee, and then that will be, uh, finalized by that committee, but it's not necessarily the draft that will be considered or adopted by the Town Board, they'll turn it over to the Town Board when they're finished, which will be in the coming months, and then the Town Board will have to look at that document, see if they agree with it, because it's the Town Board that will then have to process that document. The Town Board will also have to hold a public hearing, so there'll be yet another opportunity for the public to review and comment on it, and only then would the final version of that Comprehensive Plan be adopted and become the Comprehensive Plan for the town. And only then, and only then would, uh, the zoning changes that could flow from that Comprehensive Plan be then considered.
So, Mr. Crisco, I think our understanding of the process is similar, and the idea that that's why it's inappropriate before that process has run its course for people to, in a sense, announce the use of that site, when it, so my point about it is, we have these processes for a reason, you know, school boards, local governments, state governments have these processes to protect both of individual property rights, but also our collective community, and that I'm asking for the process to run its course, as you outlined, and I would be happy if it was. And I would say that, as I said, this is not so much about a matter of the legalities of it, I'm not making any accusations, I'm not la- launching a tour against anyone based on hearsay. I'm asking for people to behave up to the office, which I think would be the expectation, if not necessarily the requirement.
I understand your comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, is there anybody else? No, um, okay, so, um, special meeting. So first we have a resolution to adopt the local law to override the tax cap. Whereas the Town Board has before consideration a proposed local law, titled A Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit Established in General Municipal Law, Subsection Three C. And whereas following due notice, the Town Board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore be resolved as follows, one, if the Town Board does hereby adopt the proposed local law, two, that the said local law shall take effect upon filing of the same in the Office of the Secretary of State in Albany, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Um, next, we have a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the darkroom special use permit, can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the Town Board hereby schedules a public hearing on the said application for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock. And two, that as required by Town Code, subsection one fifty-eight dash forty-one, the town clerk shall publish a post notice of said public hearing not less than ten days prior to the public hearing, and three, that as required by Town Code, subsection one fifty-eight dash forty-one, not less than ten days prior to the public hearing, the applicant shall mail notice of the public hearing to certified mail to the owners of the property abutting of the subject property and directly across any enjoying the street of the subject property, and an affidavit of mailing shall be submitted to the Town Board by the applicant adver- prior to the public hearing, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes, um, next I have a resolution for the Sushiari settlement, um, can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Now therefore be resolved that Special Counsel to the Town is authorized to execute a settlement on behalf of the Town for assessments for no less than the following. Um, do we need to read this whole table, Dominic?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the assessment reductions contained in the table?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Next, um, the Jackson Avenue Culvert Replacement, can I get a motion to award the bid to Tectonic Engineering Consultants in the amount of twenty-two thousand for Geotech Engineering?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Um, next, can I get a motion to approve the fire monitoring at Munger Cottage, um, for nine hundred and ninety-five dollars per panel and the forty-five dollar charge?
So moved.
Second.
For American alarm, sorry.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Next, can I get a motion to approve Taylor Road Culvert Replacement Payment Application Number Two?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Um, next, can I get a motion to approve Sewer District One Shore Road, Phase Two Payment Application for Blue Heron Construction?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. McBrady.
Yes.
Mr. Wojcowski.
Yes. Um, then I have the Hasbrook Avenue Drainage Project Payment Application Number Seven, can I get a motion to approve? Um, then I have the Hasbrook Avenue Drainage Project Payment Application Number Seven. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtzowski.
Yes, can I get a motion to approve warrant number ten?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtzowski.
Is there any public comments before? We do have three minor items for executive session. Can I get a mo- uh, is there any further public comments? No? Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, employment history and discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion of specific persons employed by the town, particularly in the Justice Court, Town Clerk's Office, Assessor's Office and Building Department?
So moved.
Second.
Fifteen minutes.
Oh, it will be, it will be.
Mr. McCarthy, conditional?
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Agreed.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtzowski.
Yes.